I hereby call to order this committee of the whole meeting. It is Monday, November 8th, 2021. The time is 8:01. Will the clerk please call the roll? Hold on. Amy Paling.
Here.
John Cesar Ready.
Here.
Anne Hart.
Here.
Bonnie Kim.
Here.
Frank Panzico.
Here.
Lisa Schneider-Babes.
Here.
Erin Stone.
Here.
Great. I seek a motion to approve the October 18th, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. I move to approve the October 18th, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. They have a second.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions to the minutes? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll? John Cesar Ready.
Yes.
Anne Hart.
Yes.
Bonnie Kim.
Yes.
Frank Panzico.
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Babes.
Yes.
Erin Stone.
Yes.
Amy Paling.
Yes.
Motion carries. So we will begin with Facility Development Committee and Mr. Panzico.
Good morning. It's that time of year where we get a lot of work in the background, but relatively little new stuff. So I'll hand it off to Cory to fill us in on what's going on.
Thank you. Yeah, the design and construction team has continued to work on the behind the scenes stuff for all three projects for next summer. We do have one budget update and another one, another project that has hit the street for bidding. So let Joe dive into the details for us. Take away, Joe.
Good morning, everyone.
Hi.
Good morning.
So I'll go through our three projects. I'll start with Harper. So Harper, right now, we've established the 85% construction document budget. We are looking at a projected all-in cost of just over, just north of 4.4 million all-in. We have our pre-bid for Harper. Bid docs were distributed last week. We have our pre-bid tomorrow. It'll be a mandatory pre-bid. And bid opening for Harper right now is set up for the 23rd of November at 1:00 PM. So all in all, with regards to Harper, the tail end of the design finished out well. We're happy with where we're at from a budget standpoint. I think the timing on Harper is ideal as well. And we expect a great turnout tomorrow and a great competitive bidding on the 23rd of November, right before the holiday. Before I move on to Ramona, anybody have any questions with regards to Harper or where we're at? Okay. Ramona, so right now, 50% construction documents have been distributed. That assessment, that budget assessment, which is really the first assessment based on a design that's pretty far along, that's due in this week. I'll have that completed so that'll give us a good feel for, for where things are at from a cost standpoint related to the design, but then also where we're at from a market standpoint as well. So that's scheduled for the end of this week. Our out-to-bid for Ramona will be right after the New Year with the bid opening taking place the end of January. Mackenzie is on a similar timeline. 60% construction documents will be distributed this weekend, Mackenzie. And then that assessment will be complete on the 30th of November. And then the out-to-bid on Mackenzie will be after the New Year with the bid opening to take place the end of January as well. So all in all, everything's progressing as anticipated. Now it's just critical we continue doing our, our budget checks along the way prior to going out to bid.
Any questions on those items? I did have one that you probably addressed it, but should be more specific. Are there any potential long lead time items that would need a little bit earlier timeline? Or is this timeline early enough that it takes that into account?
Harper, we're okay. We're looking at potentially an early release of mechanical equipment for Mackenzie. So that's something that we're currently just double checking with, with vendors on those lead times. And then the windows, I expect that feedback with this first assessment by the end of the week. But definitely with, with the supply chain and where we're at now, these are things that we've flagged to double and triple check. And if we need to do an early release of something, we will. But as of, right, as of right now, we're, we're in good position to hopefully not be affected by, by a lead time.
So if we needed to do that, we'd probably need to bring it up at the December meeting. So at the December official board meeting, we'd have to authorize any earlier than these, these dates. So timeline-wise, okay? Thank you. Anything from our design team today?
I think that was it. Joe's pretty much covered it. We're working behind the scenes and cranking out our 60% issuance this Thursday from Mackenzie. So that's our next focus right now.
Great. Anybody else have any questions? All right, then I'll hand it back to you.
Great. Thank you so much, and thank you all for being with us this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sweet.
Okay. So we'll move to School Finance Committee with Mr. Cesar Ready.
Thank you. How's it feeling? So I think that we're gonna, so let's see Cory, real quick. We're gonna go over the 2021 audit. I believe that Baker Tilly's gonna present the audit reports on December 6th.
Thank you. That is correct. So as some of you may remember, typically we, we shoot for November for audit, for issuance. And we were on track for that. There was one piece of information. If you think back to our comprehensive annual financial report, which is when it's all put together is over 100 pages. About the last 20 pages is statistical information. Some of that comes from other parts of the report. And some of that comes from an outside company that we use to gather up research info, statistical demographic type stuff. That company, along with Cook County, facing some staffing challenges. And there has been some pretty significant delays north of two months in getting information, particularly on the Cook County side. So as far as like issuing the reason Nick from Baker Tilly's not here today is because we decided to wait a month and see if we could get that, get that information. And the good news is, as of late, late last night, I did receive that information from the research company. So this week we will work with Baker Tilly to push ahead and finalize everything in anticipation of that December Committee of the Whole Meeting. In light of that, I did want to share with the board since the, generally speaking, the, the actual process of the audit and the numbers of the stuff that we're probably most concerned with in the audit is, has been finalized or more or less agreed, agreed to. I did want to share with the board what the actual numbers were for the year, just so everyone can have a frame of reference. And then there's also a page that goes through the budget actual differences. So the first page that was handed out to everyone, let me share my screen if somebody's watching. So the first page is just a one-page document, something that, that I use as, as a year winds down condensed. It puts everything on one page and it's nice, neat. So the one thing that I've, that I tend to focus on, and it kind of mirrors how we talk about things from a budgeting and forecasting and financial statement reporting. If we work our way to the right-hand, about the middle of the page, there's a column called Operating Funds Total. That is the focus. Actual revenues were 63.27 million. The expenditures in the operating funds were 62.7. So within the operating funds, there was about a $479,000 net increase. However, we have to remember that we transfer out a significant amount of money from operations and maintenance every year to cover the cost of construction projects and capital projects. The transfers out for that, the, to cover our debt certificates was 6.5 million, which means that fund balance, starting at 41.79 million, dropped down to 35.7. Or as our key metric is, the fund balance as a percentage of operating expenditures, 56.9%. So that, that is the actual numbers by funds. Looks a little different compared to maybe the, the financial statements that we're used to seeing. When I look at stuff on the expenditure side, I tend to group things by salary, benefit, touch service, supplies, materials, capital. That's kind of the groupings, whereas the financial statements tend to focus on functional areas like regular instruction, special ed, support services, community services, things like that. Any questions on this page before I hop over to the budget to actual?
I had a question.
Go ahead.
So, so the fund balance as a percent of operating expenditures, is that, is that what we expected it to be?
It's, it's a good bit higher and you'll see.
Yeah, okay. That's what I thought. All right, thanks.
So the other, the other handout was budget to actual differences for the operating funds for the year. So at the top you see, we started with a budgeted deficit of 10,400,000. That includes the transfers out. So if we ignore the transfers for construction, which are really one-time, that budgeted deficit was more like 2.1 million. So as we walk through some of the, some of the ones that I find particularly noteworthy, I think the one thing to keep in mind is we think back to last year is, you know, we were finalizing a budget right at the end of July, very first few days of August. And even by the time the board took formal action, we had made a ton of operational decisions that had already kind of thrown some of these budget items out of whack that I would have, had I known that we would have done things in the middle of the year. One of the things that we were really concerned about was obviously staffing and being able to cover everything for how we were going to operate last year, particularly in the area of substitutes. So we had budgeted in many more, for many more long-term subs than, than actually occurred last year. Additionally, under the salaries and benefits compared to the budget that was in place came in well under budget. Property taxes were just a couple hundred thousand under in the grand scheme of how large that is. That's really, really close. The keep tuition line being under 335,000, while that does seem like a large number. At the time that we approved the bu, or was getting ready to finalize the budget and right before we announced what our school operations might look like, we had really, really, really strong keep sign-up at Harper and Central. And then as we announced kind of our operational plans, we did see a good number of families drop off of the keep program. We felt like that was a good sign going into the current school year. And now that we have it at all four, four elementary schools, the, the keep numbers are really strong at all four. Replacement taxes, we get an estimate from the Illinois Department of Revenue every year. And last year they had, because they were only, we were only a couple of months into the pandemic, they had dropped everyone's replacement tax estimate quite a bit because it had kind of fallen off the table in April, May, June. They usually release that number in July. However, once we got to July, August, September, the replacement tax functions were pretty strong. And then they were much stronger throughout last year than may have anticipated, which correspondingly has carried over into the current fiscal year with a much higher budget. Lunch fees were about 430,000 under. Drastically different operational settings in that. The ONM construction transfers, as I alluded to on the other page, is a large transfer every year. For this, it was 1.8 million under budget. When we set the budget for those transfers, we know what projects are taking place. And we, we make an estimate of what percentage of project do you think will be done? For last summer, for Ramona and Mackenzie, we had estimated about two-thirds of the projects should be done by June 30th. And then about 15% of the junior higher conditioning project by June 30th. In all three projects, the billings that came in at June 30th were well below, as you can see. Another, another key area where the district unintentionally saved some money was transportation. As we all remember, there were, there were periods of time where students across the district were at home and our agreements with the transportation companies last year. We did not pay for days that no buses ran. So regular, regular transportation was about 156,000 under. Sped transportation was 440. I do think that when we look back at the, especially on the specialty transportation side, I do recall in, in talking with our transportation liaison that some of the outplace facilities that we sent students were closed a little more frequently than District 39 as a whole, which then there's another line further down labeled sped tuition and the end fund that was also under budget by over 300,000. And one of the last items I want to point out, because I think it's from an operational and decision-making, I think it makes a lot of sense. The tech department was over, by a little over 600,000. And we'd actually, and that was direct result of, as the year wore on and you saw the lead times and the supply chain becoming problematic in a lot of areas, we made the decision to try and order three grade levels of iPads plus laptops early with the, several months earlier than we maybe normally would have, meaning that they would get delivered in the fiscal year 21 timeframe. And then we would pay for them that fiscal year as well. It's a good thing we did order that because only two of the three grade levels came in by June 30th. The other one actually came in pretty close to the start of the year. And I think we ordered that in April or May. So it was about three months, you know, roughly. So, and one of the nice things is, as we learned from that last year, we've built that into the fiscal year 22 budget. And we'll have that going forward where we, and Tony and I have already had discussions about when is the appropriate time to order the next grade level iPads for next year. We built that into the budget to be able to order those ahead of time and not have to try and thread the needle for a July delivery, and then risk them not coming for the start of the school year. I think as far as, you know, other variances, there's other variances on there. Many of them are just, you know, smaller amounts. Hit on the ones that I find particularly noteworthy. As you can see, we started, started the year at about 70% fund balance and we're ending at 56.9, which sets up nicely, I think, to, to John's question about, you know, is that better than what? Yes, it is. There's, I think, on the whole, many things that were better for the district that, that has helped keep the fund balance up. One of the benefits of that is now rolling into fiscal year 22 and beyond. That's, you know, some additional money that allows us to tackle other initiatives or capital projects. The one thing of the, of the difference between the budgeted deficit of 10.4 million and the actual deficit of just over 6 million, you know, any of the items in there where we save money as in that, yes, we, that is kind of true savings. The one area that I would caution that's not necessarily true savings is the construction transfer line. Just because we were 1.8 million under fiscal year 21, all that really means is I budgeted a correspondingly higher amount in fiscal year 22. So, so yeah, I will open up to any questions. And before I do that, I just want to remind everyone, heading into the December meeting, we'll have Nick Cavalieri from Baker Tilly do the audit presentation, similar to what he did last year. We'll have Liz Hennessy from Raymond James update us and, and kind of share market, market conditions and what we're able to do heading into calendar year 22 on the debt issuance and refunding perspective. And then we'll, we'll top it off with the annual five-year financial statement projections.
Cory, that was great. Good document to go through. Makes sense to me where the expenditures went based on how the year went. So anybody have questions? There's a lot, a lot here, so.
Such an unusual year too. So really hard to estimate budget and then.
I mean, there's, there's just a lot here, so. Yeah, go ahead, Frank.
I just had a, a couple of quick points or comments. The, mostly just the highlight things that I, well, because sometimes we don't talk about those things. The, the keep tuition, I mean, that only represented the, you know, 35, 40 students that dropped out, which I think percentage-wise is quite good considering the year. So that's, that I think is noteworthy. The. The, the other item that I know John brings up every once in a while and I think is important is we have the, the fund balance of 35 and our investment strategy. You know, when, when pretty much any interest rate that you could get from a bank, it was the difference between, you know, 0.1% and 0.5%. And, you know, CDs were, you know, approaching zero. It didn't make as much difference, but in the area of potentially, you know, slowly, hopefully, but rising interest rates, it's an area that I think we need to keep aware of. And I'm not sure we've ever had an answer, but the more we look at it, maybe we'll find something that, you know, some percentage of this money appropriately could be invested, not a risky thing, but it's likely less risk, likely more risky and higher return. So I think it's a topic that we need to keep talking about.
I think that's a really good point. I mean, it'll become politically harder to get zero percent interest, I think, at some point, maybe. So it's just, it's just, it's hard to watch, you know, the millions of dollars invested so poorly or whatever. Well, I guess safely.
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 Yes. But not returning any yield. Yeah, thanks, Frank. You know, there's, I had a couple. Does anybody else want to ask anything? A, a couple of things are kind of interesting, me personally. So I think you wrote replacement tax. Now, I know what that is. I don't know if anybody else knows what that is. So you probably do, Carrie, but it's, it's, do you want to say what it is?
Yeah.
And how it's, because it's interesting. And it's a, it's an income-based tax.
It's corporate personal property replacement taxes. It's been around, I think, since the late seventies.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it's just odd. So it's, so Illinois doesn't have a personal property tax. And it was replaced by an income tax on corporations and close to, like partnerships and S Corps. And the allocation, I believe, is based on whatever revenue was lost in, like, 1976. So it's this super obscure calculation. And when you see it go up, it's like frankly, really good news for Illinois because there's lots of money being made at the corporate and partnership level. So it's just interesting to me. Where you, you know, we're usually stuck with the property tax. But anyway. Another thing I wanted to kind of call out there was you mentioned, so is that, that's a committee of the whole meeting? The one where the audit?
Yeah. December, December 6th.
Okay. And then our bond council is coming too. And onto that meeting. I, I always feel like I am undereducated on, on our debt structure. So if there's anything you could do to maybe educate us ahead of time, like a note of, okay, this is the big picture, what's going on with our debt, that would be really helpful before that, I think.
Yeah, I think we can, I think we can work with Liz and.
Yeah.
Get some information to share with the board ahead of that, ahead of her presentation.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else? All right. Oh, go ahead, Frank.
I remembered the one that I forgot. The other one that I wanted to highlight was the technology. Again, it was kind of presented as, I guess, we're kind of moving along. But I think that was a really good decision by the team to, to take that into account. It obviously paid off this year. And I think that's one of those things that you kind of do and doesn't get noticed. And I wanted to say, Cory.
I'll just add, Tony's been all over it. I mean, he's the one that's been. It's a, I mean, you've heard about the computer chip shortage and it certainly impacts us as well. We've had to switch brands, find different suppliers, order things early. Some things are coming faster, some things come slower. We're actually thinking about placing the iPad order for next year, next month. You probably would never have thought in December, but right now Apple's looking at three-month lead times. So, yeah, we're all over it. We're getting devices and equipment into our teachers' hands and our kids' hands. But it does require some, some planning. And there's been some interesting things. We ordered access points for the Mackenzie-Ramona construction in May or June, and they just came in two weeks ago. I mean, there are things that just are taking much longer. Some are a little shorter, but normally we have spares. We always try to keep one on the shelf. I mean, there's strategies to help insulate us from this kind of thing. And knowing that supply pipeline won't change for a year or two, we continue to use these strategies. Thanks for acknowledging it. There is a lot of work behind the scenes to make this stuff happen.
Oh, yeah. And, and I think the, the fact that you're doing that on supply chain now is indicative of you looking at it for rising inflation. If inflation is constant for a while, or accelerating for a while, some of those same type of thought processes that you're doing. So I'm glad to hear that, that, that was cleaned up. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Great. Thanks to all of you. We'll move to strategy with Ms. Schneider-Babes.
Great, thank you. Today, we're going to discuss the 2021 fall achievement data.
Thank you. And we do have some copies here, so I'll distribute those as Katie Lee gets started with the review. Just as a reminder, these are data that are collected from our students three times a year. And we see the fall data as the benchmark for the year. So kind of a starting place for the year, but we do look back and do some comparisons of year over year from previous years. So Katie and her team have taken some time to dig into these data. So too have our teacher teams looked at these data to start designing and implementing intervention groups and enrichment groups as well. So I will let Katie take it away and I'll hand these on.
Thank you. You know, to provide a little bit of context, something I'm learning through a course with data wise, I'd love to start with just explaining the different levels of data that the school district would abuse and look at in order to make instructional decisions. And I know that many of you already know, but just to provide that common understanding of how data is gathered about student learning that inform instructional decisions. There's classroom level and then there's school and district level. And so for the teacher and staff, you know, they assess and value classroom and instructional, our curriculum-based information. And so does the district. They do it more frequently and that helps the teachers and staff in the classroom in order to make those instructional decisions. And we want to learn through them. As you remember from the strategic plan action steps, one of the items that we'd like to learn from our teachers and getting voices on board is what? learn from our teachers and getting voices on board is what are the assessments that give them the most important information that they need. Um, they decide what comes next within the lessons based on that. They measure how their students are performing based on those and decide when to reteach or provide enrichment. Sometimes it's formal, it's an end of the unit class. Sometimes it's informal, it's through observation. So that's a really key component that almost gets lost when we do some of these presentations. And I thought I would, um, share that with everyone here. So the other part, as you know, is the district and school level assessments we administer. So as Carrie shared with us, um, the NWA is presented to our students, fall, winter, spring. Those are three-time snapshots of how our students are doing and we monitor at the district level, how are they doing? How are they progressing through our curriculum and learning? And then we also have the IAR, which is a state assessment that is administered one time a year at the end of the school year. And so, um, although I am going to share with you the fall MAP data, I'd like to begin with the spring IAR preliminary information that we have received. Um, it's really important to note that this is not public data yet. It is preliminary in all nature. Uh, we did receive it just recently, so it took a little bit of work to get some of this prepared for you so that you could, um, so that we could share this with you, but we wanted you to know, um, what we've learned from this achievement data as well. So all of this data that will be presented today and also on Monday is based on achievement for our students. Okay, I'm going to share on screen.
Right, just recently, Katie means on Monday. You know, really clear about how quickly this needed to be turned around and, uh, many of us were a little uncomfortable with the fact that we have this timeline turnaround and need to present it to the board, but our teachers haven't yet had the opportunity even to really look at these data. So, um, that makes it a little bit tricky, uh, because it really should be data owned by teachers and students. And unfortunately with the lag time in, in receiving that data, um, that's been a little difficult, so.
I was just asking about, like, do you have public data and not yet public, but by the very nature of sharing it today, it is public.
Our data we can share early, um, other districts' data is not yet public.
Okay, so to do apple, like to compare, we can't do that yet.
That's right.
That's helpful. Thank you.
And all aspects of the data that will be shared is preliminary. We need any background to this change, um, for our local and block.
Can you just give us that news? Like, does that mean we're expecting it to change or there's this double checking and there might be a typo or like what is preliminary data mean?
There's a couple of things, yes. We do expect it to change slightly. Anything referenced to the state could change for a couple of reasons. One, they're still continuing the data at the state level. And two, districts were provided the opportunity to either test kids in the spring, as typically all districts are required to do, or they were given grace to push that testing to the fall. And some districts chose to do that. And so those data, those, um, districts who chose to test in the fall, their data isn't yet included in any of the information we've received, again, as far as we're aware. And I'll, I'll share, um, I appreciate that the state answered the phone when I called and, and talked to me through things, but I talked to a couple of different people at the state and the answers were a little bit different. So I think it, it really is just a lot of data that they're, um, trying to process at this point. And depending on who you're talking to, it, you get kind of a little bit different answer. And so, um, our understanding is that all of the district, all of the district's data will be released on December 2nd, including the state-level data. And so that puts a time crunch on us, even though we understand and are trying to be understanding of the state, that they still are processing a lot of data. We only meet with you this time and next week, and so we feel the need to make sure that you're, you're what information we have. So, and, and we do still need to hold some follow-up meetings with our teachers, because they only recently received these data on Monday and are trying to adhere to all the timeline requirements that we have. That's the context I can provide. Katie, did I miss anything?
No, that's perfect. Um, you know, and the purpose of sharing with our teachers is so that we can share with them what we've learned at the district level as ways to support them, as a ways to, a way to say, hey, we noticed, um, a particular trend that the district needs the help and support, um, you, the teachers, as well as the students in progressing forward. So it's really to identify that area of focus. So enough, so before I begin, I just wanted to also reiterate that the 2021 IAR data is a measure of achievement in one point in time. This is just to provide also some context of the evolution of this rate assessment. Um, you will notice that 2020 IAR is not listed there, 2019, which was, um, the pre-pandemic spring. And then the year 1920 is not reflected because we did not assess our students at that time. And then 2021 is the year of the pandemic. And I would argue that we're still feeling some effect of that, um, this year as well. So those are the different task forms. And in the next few slides, um, what I would like to do is explain what the different levels mean as far as our student performance. And then you will be provided a breakdown with grayed-out bars for the ones that were part and then the colorful bars that represent 2019 and 2021. So the student performance is described, um, in three different levels. So level one being did not yet meet expectations. Um, and level two meant partially meeting expectations. Level three, approaching expectations. Level four is met those expectations and five is exceeded those expectations. And we typically share out levels four and five. But the next couple of slides provides you an overall breakdown of the percentage of our students for 2021, how they did, um, on this assessment. And the last one combining the meet and exceed together. That first one was for reading, this one means now. Now these, um, next slides will show you that preliminary data that we explained. Um, so I'm going to run through these pretty quickly, but each slide has third grade ELA and third grade now. I'm sorry, each grade level's ELA and now. So I know it was a short amount of time, but we did try to dig a little deeper. And, um, because of our strategic plan and our, um, goal one in student achievement growth, we really did focus on, um, our reading instruction, ELA instruction, I should say. And so in order to dive deeper and figure out what the focus should be or what did we learn from this, um, information, we went to try to understand how do we break down the ELA component for this summative assessment? And, um, the students receive reports and the pre-lemens receive reports where there is a subclaim performance breakdown on the back of the report. And, um, there's little circles that say higher, middle and lower, or H, M and L. So the H on each of the subclaims specifies any performance at level four and five, which is the meet and exceed. The middle would say that they are demonstrating proficiency consistent with the performance level three, which is they almost, they're approaching, meeting those standards. And then the lower would be equivalent to what I just shared with you as level one and two. So for ELA, um, dug a little deeper, which are the subclaims. And these are the subclaim categories, literary, text, informational text, vocabulary, written expression, knowledge and use of language conventions. So prior to that pandemic year, when we looked at the spring 2018, we did notice and staff noticed, teachers noticed, the administration noticed, that we did have to work on a couple of them. But one in particular that also math assessment supported with informational. So when you look at the next few slides in the breakdown, that's something that I'd like, um, for you to focus to have as well.
And I'll just add again, these are data, these subclaim categories, typically we would receive that data from the state. This year, they've only released to us those big, uh, grade level information. So again, the data that you'll see crunched here really is Katie and her team analyzing the data, um, and trying to make some sense of it so that we could, uh, start acting upon that data. Because again, these are, um, assessments that were administered to our students back in March, April, May last year. And it feels a little like we, we want to do something to, to better understand these numbers. The state hasn't yet provided this information in aggregate form to us. So we're trying to crunch these numbers as best we can.
Okay, so the next few slides will provide you that information. So it will follow this pattern and I'll use, um, third grade, um, for you. So 2019, this was the pre-pandemic, um, results of our IAR and the breakdown as much as we could with the higher, uh, middle, lower. And then the 2019, these are preliminary calculations, because we've heated. And as you can see, it's something that we have in a camp center and we need to really focus on what the recovery is. So I'll just run through these by grade level. Three, four, ELA.
It was?
It, it's not in the printout packet.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry. I thought it's, but it's not here.
That's fine.
Second attachment.
So that concludes at least the sharing of, I think that, um, the one thing of note that we administration have noticed at, in a preliminary level is our focus, um, on learning recovery for written expression. Um, so prior to the pandemic, it wasn't as weak as it is during this pandemic, but it was definitely an area that we saw we could grow. Almost in every grade level, we could help our teachers, support them and support our students at a district level by providing resources, um, having collaborative, collaborative conversations with them in, in providing that support. And so that will be the primary focus for, um, Department of Curriculum Instruction and my coordinators and myself, where we sit down and we talk to, um, the teachers and provide them those resources and also allow them the time, um, to spend saying, you know, this is one assessment, but here is a format that, um, they are asking our students to express their understanding and knowledge and share that with them and more explicitly provide lessons and all of those, um, strategies in order to make it. I'm going to stop sharing, but obviously this is the portion of questions that I'm happy to answer.
And I'll also, also add to what Katie was just sharing. IAR is slightly different than MAP and you'll see in the results, the, the results are a little different as well. Certainly students' investment in the two different measures, we find a little different. But one noteworthy difference is that in the IAR test, students are asked to write, whereas in the NWA MAP test, they aren't. Their ELA knowledge is, um, assessed in a different way, um, through more like multiple choice kinds of questions. And so we're recognizing that as, is maybe one of those key differences, along with the, just the simple investment and familiarity with the IAR test. Again, for many of our students, they're, um, they haven't been as familiar with the IAR test as they have with the MAP. So, um, just some other noteworthy things that we want to continue to dig in a little more and, and learn from our teachers, what they're seeing in their classroom in terms of written performance, um, that may be either similar to what we see on the IAR or maybe different from, in which case we tackle that problem a little bit differently as we try and do with that data.
So, um, I know, I think you just answered some of my questions because I think it's interesting as we dive into MAP next, that the two assessments really show the difference, that one shows a dip due to COVID likely and one didn't so much. So I don't know if there are any other reasons, but I think that, that may speak to it. I don't know if their familiarity and comfort. But I, I just also want to say thank you so much for sharing this with us, knowing that you just got this on Monday. I can't imagine how you turned this around so quickly. Uh, I'm very grateful to have a, understanding of it at this meeting and I know that could be such a timeframe. But I, I do think, uh, you know, after we discuss MAP, it'll be interesting to think about why the two look. But it sounds like you have a great plan for attacking the areas that you saw need.
Yeah, but, um, again, lots of information and I know it's early and even what we have here took a lot of work. So, um, I think that's great that you're able to bring us some information for this meeting because the timing don't always work out the way, uh, you'd like it to, the material that you completely control. Um, I wanted to just kind of reemphasize the written expression. I'm glad that that, um, highlighted. I mean, both the, the bar numbers indicate that that's an area, which is obviously why we thought of it, but just from a historical and I get to be the historian. Written, written expression has been on the list of things that, I wouldn't say we do badly, I'd, I'd say more that we could do better is probably the right way to put it. Literally 10 years ago, it was a big topic on the board when we had more information from Nutri-R that our students felt that they were well-prepared in lots of different areas. And the one that always was the outlier was, was writing, um, that at least the expectations at Nutri-R were significantly high. Um, and that doesn't mean that we weren't doing a good job, but it meant that the delta from what we did to what was expected in Nutri-R was, was big. And that was brought up 11, 10, nine, eight years ago, pretty consistently on the board. Seems like it's still an area that, um, doing better would be better. So I'm glad that that was highlighted in scenarios, um, I'm sure, um, you know, working would, would make a difference. But that's, that's good. Given that it's preliminary, uh, that's probably the only word line, item that I have for today.
Thank you for this. This was great and your explanation was great. I just have a question in terms of expectations going forward and in terms of when we think the data will no longer be preliminary and when we will, we'll be data at the other levels? Great question. What we're told from the state is that it will be finalized and released publicly on December 2nd, um, as part of their state report card. So when you go on to ISB, you can click on that button that says the state report card and that's when the data will be released, as we understand it today. I will say that has changed a couple of times since the test was administered and so I'm hopeful that that remains true. And I'm also hopeful that districts have the opportunity to receive their own data in all of its disaggregated forms before it ends up publicly released. That typically is what the state aims to do. I'm not sure this year with so many variables if they're able to accomplish that. So, but our, what we are, have been consistently told over the last three weeks is that it will be released on December 2nd.
Quick, you don't have to remember ISB if that takes the harder, this state report card at the Google level gets you to the, to the website. So the information is out there.
I had a question. Katie, were there any surprises?
Well, not really surprises, I suppose. Um, you know, Frank is absolutely correct that we've been having conversations about written expression. I think before we had more of this broad overview impression of that rather than the subclaim information. And so it really solidified it. Um, you know, we tried many things since then. Uh, that was a, when I was a coordinator back then, we would have Nutri-articulation meetings and we would learn a lot about that. So that part wasn't a surprise. I think the impact from 2019 to 2021, if you look at sort of three. we look at sort of the whole, it does show that there was some loss of how our students are demonstrating their knowledge and understanding. So that was something that, I knew it was some, but you know, something to make note of. The other part that I was looking for was, you know, we set a goal for informational tasks before, and when I looked at 2019, that was a bit of a celebration for us. So I don't want to, I'm not trying to negate the need in written expression, but I did want to celebrate that when our staff and the district focused in on informational tasks, understanding that we did improve, and we were positioned in a better place in 2019. So, you know, should have, kind of thoughts with the pandemic, but we are, we are ready to be very supportive of our teachers and work on this particular area over the time through this year, and also continuing on. That's an area that we will report on, and we'll share with you if we see improvements in our efforts.
So when I start to think about the data, right, it's hard, because we knew learning loss was happening. And contextually, there's no way that it could not have happened, given that the kids had online and different kinds of instruction thrown at them at the drop of the tide. So I just want to at least normalize that it's hard to see this data. And I just encourage both the board and the community to focus on the, what do we do now? And this helps us kind of prioritize what do we do now? Let's just all pray that this all COVID, move on.
Well, and I think it's interesting, and as we get more context to these data, it will be helpful, because I do think that there are some, several areas where our students maintain their learning and their performance, and we're not seeing the same trend across the state. And so I think, first of all, that's noteworthy. The other thing that's noteworthy is, I don't think we yet have data on participation rates, but our, I think our participation rates were pretty well maintained, whereas across the state, we don't see that as consistently. So some of the students who were maybe in more of a remote environment did participate in this test, and that may skew the data a little bit, too. So it'll be interesting as we continue to monitor our students and bring some context to that. I think there's actually a lot of places where we can celebrate our students' continued performance, similar to pre-pandemic. And then there's some areas where we can really focus in and focus that learning recovery and performance. So I think these are really helpful data. I wish we had received them sooner, so we could dig in a little bit sooner, but we'll do what we can now and continue to support it.
This is just to echo what you just said. If the premise of this test is to meet certain expectations, or those pre-pandemic expectations, because in my mind, it was an abnormal year for everyone, and I might expect some abnormal results, considering the trend that we usually get. And I just don't want this to become like a single story that replaces the narrative of the Herculean efforts that have all the educators in our district and all the families supporting our children at home did. I think everybody did the best they could, and I'm encouraged that we have a strategic plan that's new, that's going to address some of these things, and that we're already focusing on areas that have been identified for growth.
I'd follow up to what Katie was pointing out. Given that it was, by all measures, an unusual year, the, it sounds like realistic that the state data may diverge even more than usual from our data. So looking at other high-performing school districts, I think is even more key this year, is comparing against the state average, that not as many people took it, that they had lots more operational problems, and weren't as spectacular in solving those as we were. That comparison loses even more. But, you know, other high-performing school districts would have, you know, potentially similar remediation efforts. So would be a culture and more meaningful comparison.
Sounds like the focus is dive in, focus on what we can do. And, Cortina?
We're eager to share our MAP NWA data.
Yeah, about that, yeah.
Again, that is benchmark data for this school year. And as we acknowledged last year being so unusual, we weren't quite sure if we would see some more dips in these data as well, as students not only had an unusual year, but then a summer where they were recovering from a lot of things, not just in the new school year, but a lot of impact of the pandemic. And so we're really eager to share and celebrate some of what we're seeing in these data as well. So I'll let Katie kind of walk through that.
Sure. Thank you very much for the conversation. So for the fall NWA assessment, we typically share with you what we consider to be that baseline data for the year. It sets our expectation and understanding of our students in the fall, and then we will share continuously throughout the year to show their progress. And so for, it's been repeated a few times, but our achievement levels in this particular assessment has remained consistent. That is something noteworthy with the context of everything that we just discussed. And so I will share with you multiple perspectives of the same data, just to share the story of the journey of our students. So before I do, this is just some facts about the NWA MAP assessment that we provide. There are some new families that have come to our district, and also new board members, and so we just wanted to share with you that three times a year is when this is administered. It's for grades 2 through 8, in the high country areas of reading and athletics. The RASH unit is what we call the RIT score, and it is the equal interval scale, all the way from second grade all the way to eighth grade. And it really is an adaptive assessment that addresses difficulty and complexity based on the student's. So these two next slides will show you just an overview of the board's ID of your assessment levels from 2017, which is when we adopted NWA as our assessment. And just to provide some context, we provided you the national mean grade, which is based on 2020. Again, another way of looking at our students is the percentage of students performing above their grade level national average. And so we wanted to note from 2017 through 2021 for you, the percentage of our students that are above that average. Just another way to think about this data. And then we want to align with our portrait of a D39 scholars. They go from, you know, the time that they've joined us, whether it be kindergarten or a later year, all the way through eighth grade and graduate. So at the bottom, you'll see current second graders is the orange bar, about 81% of our students above the national average, and then continuing on. You can see in our current fifth graders, the purple being second grade, and moving forward for them, that they are increasing at a good rate, or we've got our students maintaining, as they progress through our grades as well. And this is for reading. And this is math, same information. Now what we do is go based on grade level. So looking at the district-wide second grade, so looking at that district U, this is reading, and this is math. The two years, or the three years I'd like to point out is the fall 2019 is the yellow bar, fall 2020 was the first year of la, of fall of last year, which was our pandemic year, and then fall 2021, really continuing on. All right, so reading and math for second grade, and then I'll just go through these next slides quickly for all the other grades. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. We tried to apply the same deeper dive into this. So interestingly, unfortunately for me, actually, MAP decided to re-categorize their subcategories this year. So what I'm showing you is from 2017 to 2020. And if you notice, fall 2020, sometimes it's potentially the best performance our students achieved, and sometimes it's on par or it's low. But this literary text, informational text, and vocabulary, those are pieces of information that we analyze. And then for this year, this was the subcategory, they just clustered literary text, informational text, and vocabulary. And so moving forward, these are the categories that we share as far as the longitude goes. And here's second grade math. These categories did not change. And now I will proceed a little bit quickly. This is grade three, reading and math, and then the same breakdown for reading, and then math. So that was more of the bar graph of the grade level as a whole, but we'd like to present this information in cohort news, again, trying to show you the journey of the same group of students throughout time. Here's reading. It's important to note that the black line bar is the national mean score. It's 20, national mean RIT, based on the 2020 norms, and the norms were calculated pre-pandemic.
I was just personally sure. It's also interesting sometimes to just look at where the national mean is for the grade level, and then compare where our students reach that national mean for that grade level. So a very rough estimate, if you're looking here at current seventh graders, our seventh graders in third grade reached a mean of 211, and that is the national mean in sixth grade. So a really rough estimate. We wouldn't want to say that they're all performing at the sixth grade level, but just acknowledging the, where that national mean is falling, and then following that trend line to ensure that we're at least maintaining, if not growing, our students by comparison to what the national means was.
And I think these line graphs demonstrate something that we share. We've shared that with you, that they perform higher, but I think this demonstrates it a lot more clearly than the little Google app that I'm off to decide that.
He used to share with you.
So here is grade eight, and same thing, but now with math. So bringing us back to the strategic plan goal and the action steps for 2021, 22, just wanted to remind you that this is kind of our North Star. We are working to achieve, you know, a rigorous academic learning situation where we're differentiating instruction for our students. These strategies are still in effect. I think you'll notice that the auditing action steps were also mentioned throughout these presentations, as well as a focus on reading instruction. What we'd like to do is obviously add in the writing focus, and make sure that written expression is addressed this year. So, you know, not only have we increased our focus on phonics instruction and having specialists trained, making sure that we can identify through the audit, the assessment that is more sensitive to how our students are learning and demonstrating their learning within the classroom level and learning from the teachers there. And then the impact of the pandemic is, I mean, it's obvious that one of the areas where we'd be in written expression, if you compare spring IAR with the fact that now reading does not provide opportunities for our students to write, that's also information that supports this goal. And then really trying to do our best as administrators in the district to provide the support that our teachers need and the time that they need in order to work on some of these lessons and goals. And we hope to really be prepared and give them that intensive support January through March prior to the next IAR assessment. And if we go on to the questions, we just finished this assessment. I'm happy to answer any that you have.
There's a lot of information.
I just want to share anecdotally, my own students that I've been really impressed with, and I'm sure it varies by teacher, but the way teachers have talked with my kids about their own journey and analyzing their history to create productive learning goals for them as individuals. And I'm not someone who over emphasizes standardized testing, and I think the way these conversations were done in the classroom was really age-appropriate and productive, to think about how kids can make goals for themselves to improve. I just thought it was really impressive and thoughtful and age-appropriate.
I have a question. Thanks so much for the presentation.
Oh, sure.
As a layperson, I don't really know what to do with this data or how to read it. And so like, you know, I don't know, for example, like, what, if there's significance between, you know, looking at all these bar graphs, they all look like, you know, pretty much the same every year. And so, so is the, is a two, like, 199 versus 201, is that significant? Or, you know, I don't know what that means in real, in real time. And like, let's say there's like a dip, like a seven or, you know, a seven number dip. Is that huge? Or is it really like, you know, when I look at all of the graphs, I think, okay, well, it's, everything is okay, right? Like, everything is pretty steady.
I think that, yes, I think there's multiple ways that you can trip that. One, the first one that the line, the two line graphs show is that our students' average RIT scores compared to, you know, other, other students who, at that grade level, also take the assessment in the fall, it's always higher than their national peers. So now, if you value that, then that's something to, that's noteworthy. Just like Gary shared, that, you know, a 211 for upper tier grade level in District 39 is not as key as an average nationally until later in the year. So that says something about our district. Again, it depends on whether you value the national peers or not. The other piece would be how consistent our students are maintaining that high level of achievement. So if you notice in the green bars, that's the fall of last year, and we actually anticipated a bigger dip. And in some of the grades, there is no dip. It's actually one of the higher scores. And so that's something, that's Uh, and so that's something, that's a huge, um, I don't know, uh noteworthy compliment to our staff and our teachers where um our achievement levels were maintained. It could have dipped and it didn't, as you can see in IAR. Some of it, it it did dip in up in um areas. And so that's something to celebrate. Uh, the other way um to look at the dips was we tried to get Nate Jansen, um is the expert statistician. Um, when we were having a conversation with him, he was reluctant to say what whether one, a difference of two RIT points was significant compared to seven. As a layman myself, I would say seven points is significant. Um, that's something that we should monitor at a district level and help and support. Um, one or two, it could be a measure of rounding uh into the one's place. It could be a lot of other factors that would uh deem it not as significant of a dip. I don't know if that helps. Okay, good.
Have looking at a standard deviation kind of measure on some of these might be useful when we're looking at the the RIT score in particular. Um, but for some people, a standard deviation score doesn't mean a whole lot. So it kind of just depends on um which measure is most important to you. And one of the things I'm really excited about is the fact that the DSAT will be looking at these data and helping us to define what is it that we're aiming for? Because I think, um, your point is a really good one. We examine these data and we are concerned when they dip. We're excited when we see growth. Um, but to really understand what what are those expectations, what are we aiming for for our students, could be helpful to us moving forward. Because I think what I've experienced, not only in our district, but in prior districts, um is that different data points mean something different to different people. And so it can be really hard and and quite frankly exhausting for our teachers and our administrators when one person wants to look at the RIT score and be bummed that there there was a drop of one point, but someone else is looking at the percent above fifty per- fiftieth percentile nationally and they're really ecstatic that we're performing as well as we are. So really kind of coming to terms with these are the areas that we really want to monitor, I think will help us narrow our focus and help us to support our teachers and administrators to not feel so overwhelmed every time there's a release of data. Because right now it feels like, here's the data and we have like a fifty page presentation. And everyone's going to pull something out a little bit differently, right? Um, one, one page looks really good, the other page looks like maybe there's some growth. And um so helping us to really, as a stakeholder group, determine what's most important to us will be really helpful to us moving forward, I think. So I'm I'm excited to have that opportunity and not have it be just an administrative decision or just a board decision. So um that that stakeholder group will will help us to define some of that. Thank you for highlighting that.
I I think this was answered before, but um I know one of the excitement when we went to MAP was that it was a more standardized and readily available and more normalized with other districts. And part of that hope was that we would get access to some data from other districts. Is there any ability to do that? Or is that one of those things that that um as we looked into it more, wasn't as fruitful as we thought?
Uh, so I will share that each district does have the opportunity to share their own data. MAP does not release district data in a standardized form, they'll only release it nationally. Um, they do some similar two district comparisons and that data is available, but not frank in the way that you're frequently looking for, which is our New Churfeeder District uh neighbors um or suburban similar districts. What they do is they'll look at um teaching minutes, teaching weeks, similar sized districts, similar districts, uh sorry, demographic districts. And they will create what what they believe to be similar districts to ours and then run some comparisons there. I find that data to be really interesting to look at, but it it, they won't name those other districts because that would be released in those other districts data. So um not as readily available as I think what you're aiming for, which is, let's pick the eight similar districts that we think are similar in suburban Chicago and let's compare to them. The only way that we can really compare to them is to wait for them to release their data, to hope that they release it in a similar format that we've interpreted our data and then could theoretically make some comparisons. What I've found is that every district cuts the data a little bit differently. Um, and so while when that come they release it in this format, we analyze it in this way. And so again, as we look at KPIs, that may be something we want to really look at is is how are we, how are we examining the data and what's most meaningful to us? Because we we're not, we don't have access to the each district's data in the way that I think you're hoping for and envisioning.
Well, that that's kind of the, if we could get everything we wanted, it never happened.
Right.
Um, but but I I would just like, from the MAP standpoint, um, you know, if we're comparing against the national average, that doesn't really give us that much information. I mean, we view ourselves as significantly better than the national average. So the delta doesn't mean as much. Um, it sounds like there's some subcategories of like whatever their their aggregation of of higher performing school districts or school districts with the same socioeconomic, or whatever their category is, that if one of those categories was a little bit more representative than just the national average, because I I mean, the national average is almost meaningless. Because we know we do better than that and teaching systems do significantly better. So it's sort of some other category, you know, whatever one fits the best, if it doesn't fit perfectly, that's fine. But at least we'd be comparing against something that that had a little bit more um tie to what we, what we do and what we expect.
So I, we will ask the DSAT to look at some of those measures as well. And and I think um I would be interested to hear the DSAT kind of weigh in on whether that national average is something that's meaningful for some. It may not be meaningful for everyone, but I do think for some that that is actually a a useful context by which that we are um measuring our ongoing growth. So I think maybe both are are useful. So thanks for that suggestion. We'll make sure to bring that up.
Thank you. I just want to say, I said, I appreciate all the effort. It's a great report. Thank you. Absorbing it.
Um, just a quick question along the lines of the DSAT. Uh, have have all the numbers been identified at this point?
We are still working to recruit first a couple of stakeholder groups. And then there's a couple of groups where applications have been received and we'll have to narrow those numbers down. So the board, thank you, has um identified their representatives, Amy, for the DSAT?
Yes, Ms. Stone and Mr. Pankey will represent the board.
And we, thank you. And we've had a number of teachers and staff already apply. Uh, this week is parent teacher conferences, so we know it's kind of a crazy week for our teachers. Um, but we're hoping that those couple of spots that are still open will be able to recruit for as teachers have a little bit of a a break after uh preparing for parent teacher conferences. I think most of our parent positions are, we we have a couple of um applications already in that we'll have to select. We're moving. The first meeting is November seventeenth. Um, and so that will be kind of an orientation.
It's actually like two days after the next.
Uh, November seventeenth?
Oh, November seventeenth.
It's two days after the board.
Great, thank you. Okay, so uh we will move to public comments, which will be accepted in person and remotely via Zoom. Do not see anyone in person here and there is no one leaving online. So we'll continue with the agenda. Is there any old business? Just remind people of our board retreats December sixth. As I'm reminding you, I better get it right. December sixth. Uh, okay. Any new business?
Arguably new business. And Bonnie and I are going to represent board at the Mallen Croft Dinner at seven o'clock on the eleven. So for the intergovernmental um village meeting, so I think they'll probably ask us what's going on with school boards. Particularly excited about strategic planning. And the budget's in good shape. And there are all kinds of good things to say. So um, but would appreciate any input from the board or administration.
I liked their idea. It sounds like they're looking for maybe particular topics where all of our boards can collaborate. I know they gave the example just for means of conversation of sustainability or something where maybe every board might have some interest. And so that might be something to think about if there's a particular area for all the boards to collaborate. Thank you for representing us on that.
And I I had one and it's probably not, it's probably too early. But um I know there's there's a number of construction projects um going on and that can have ripple effects in terms of of size. And I I don't, I think it's in the noise right now, but in terms of staying up to date with what's going on in the community as a whole, I think that's an area that we want to make sure. You know, if you build a big apartment building, it may not add that many, but it may add a lot to the density. So any heads up along those lines? Well, I know there's the uh construction that was done where the American Vision Post was, where there's specifically here for families. Um, I suspect since the one that was in the National Bank, the price point may be higher than the than um at least a lot of it. But for instance, both of those are inside the density of the district. So disproportionately, if those numbers went up. So just to stay in touch to make sure that if there are projects coming down the line, that we're aware of and. Yeah, because I think we do, I mean, the administration. So but this is a good topic. No, it's great.
Another softer type of area that I know each organization is focused on is the inclusion. And um I think that that really has um has the potential to be a really wide effort. All right. And sisters will push to like all this celebration? So what are other people doing or what ideas? You know, I think there's an expectation from the community.
Yeah, that's great. Anything you can add, let us know. But I'm sure these things will come out.
Thank you for doing that on our behalf. Being no other new business, uh may I have a motion to adjourn to executive session?
I move to adjourn to executive session to discuss special education, specific employees and negotiating.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion carried. We are now adjourned to executive session and the time. Oh, will the clerk please call the rule?
Answers are ready?
Yes.
Anne Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Frank and Zika?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Peigs?
Yep.
Karen Stone?
Yes.
Amy Payne?
Yes, thank you. All right, motion is now carried and we are adjourned to executive session. The time is nine twenty six AM.